Towards it's what's protected in that little inlet. Um, the dimensions of the box are um sixty inches long, so it's, you know, five feet. Um, and it seems that that's the central place on the beach and it's the most protected. Um, we would fill it with a variety of safe um plastic beach choice for kids to use. Uh, and they just use them when they're at the beach, put them back in the tub when they leave. Um, we'll have some signage there and I'll talk to you about that a little bit. And then um the LIA, we donate the funds to purchase the box. And um we were going to ask all of our members to purchase a beach toy and bring it to our first meeting. We should have plenty. We can rotate rotate them through if we have too many. And um we'll be responsible for checking it, making sure that people are putting the toys back, um that if there are broken ones in there, we'll take them out, that kind of thing. Um, and we'll encourage ongoing donations of toys so we keep it filled. Um, we'll fill it by having our members bring a toy to the first meeting. Um, and um signage, I just kind of scoped out in general what it would say, welcome to the Lincolnville Beach Toy Library. Remember to share the toys and replace them when you leave. Donation's always welcome, sponsored by the LIA. And um I talked with Amy, um Amy Hand, and um she is going to help us if we want to do sort of a grand opening event, which I thought would be really fun, maybe around the first of June, and you guys could come or a subset of you could have a little photo op, invite kids, she's going to read stories, um promote it to the parents and um, you know, kind of have a little send off or startup for it. Um, the signage, I really want to get young kids involved in creating it and having some young artists work on it. Um, you know, I could see it having like kids' handprints or different things. Um, I picture kind of going up and over in the back of the toy box, so it's, you know, kind of here's the box and here's the sign. Um, I'm going to reach out to the um art teacher at the school and see if that's something that um they would want to do, get a project together. And then we have a heart and soul meeting on Tuesday tomorrow, and I'll kind of query there if anyone has any ideas. And I thought maybe you guys might have some ideas if not right now, then when you go home or if you know someone, just shoot me an email. Um, and the only other um question I wanted to bring up to you all was, um, there won't be really any, well, I can't think of any way to really secure it there. I don't think someone's going to come and take the whole blasted box and steal it, at least I hope not, but I thought that was something else I'd bring up to you guys. So, um, questions, comments? Dave got really excited, he wanted to play in the sandbox when I, so I'm counting on his vote anyway.
I don't get to vote.
I know.
Um, this is a great idea. I see other places have done things similar to this. I just, just like to reiterate what you just said. It is most likely a reality that things could be taken, including this toy box. So, and I hate to say that, but that is just the way things are. And without a, a lot of security down there, you know, without the cameras down there at this juncture.
Right.
That is not to say that we won't, but I think everybody needs to be resigned to that fact that that is a possibility. And the hearts of everybody just melt me when it comes to stuff like this, to, to do, do things like this for the community and people coming into our community. But I just want to remind you that that could potentially be a reality, that's all.
Not that surprised, but, I mean, I even thought we could cement it, you know, in the legs, but that seems a little overkill. I guess, you know, we'll take the risk and if we have to do something different or... And the thing is, I look at this kind of like a trial. That's why not doing something permanent makes sense, because maybe if it's really fun, maybe someone will want to build something more permanent, like a little shed cottage or something, and we could do that and, you know. The other thing I want to say is, um, we're so committed to doing things that don't, aren't considered beach centric. Obviously, that's where the kids go and visitors, and so it'll get a lot of use, but we also want to consider if this works, that we could do something similar at, down by Briesmer, you know, and around for kids that are playing in the water there, so that's future as well. Um, so, okay.
Yeah, Steve.
I want to go to the back of the box and chain it to the, um, chain it to the, uh, the port con current back. It falls to the back of the box.
We have a voice from Hall. Steve, what?
I love, as I say, I love the idea. Um, I've seen other places have done similar things. Uh, my only concern um is the same thing my wife sees at the library, is people come, they use the toys, they don't put them away.
Right.
Um, and so I have a feeling there's going to be a mess a lot of times around the beach and how we deal with that for a long time.
Yes, um, I plan to enlist a group of people that will go down like either every evening or every morning and kind of just throw them back in the bin. Um, I'll ask Diana O'Brien to, to take her eye, keep an eye on it, but I know that will be, that's going to be, they'll be strewn around probably, and we'll try to keep that to a minimum.
Any other thoughts or questions?
No, I was, I was just thinking exactly what, when I first read this wonderful idea, but kids don't put away toys all the time, you know? And especially in the entitle zone where they're suddenly gone.
Right.
And uh, that's plastic, you don't need in the bay, right?
Yeah.
So, if you guys could come up with a good plan, either coordinate it with Diana, Tracy, O'Brien, the morning cleanups, or amongst yourselves.
Yeah.
It's a wonderful idea, yeah.
Yeah, we will, because I know that's an issue.
Yeah.
And we don't want it all over the beach.
Sure, and uh, and the second thing is about that, uh, yeah, I, you might want to steal yourself too, or you might want to buy two of those. Uh, or, or look, look for one that you can chain.
Okay.
You know, that's got a, a fasten system, where you can chain it to something.
All right. Um, are you guys good with that as the place to put it on the beach? Kind of tucked in there? I, I...
Well, I think, I mean, I think you'll hear, uh, if the board goes ahead with a motion that we'll work to coordinate with you to decide on a final location.
Okay, okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, okay, totally.
Um, well, to that end, uh, would someone care to make a motion?
I'm kidding. I moved that the board empower a select person and/or the town administrator to work with representative of the Lincolnville Improvement Association to strategically place the toy library in an aesthetically pleasing and functional location in the Lincolnville Beach area, and that this approval is conditional on the understanding that the use and/or location can be altered or terminated by the select board at any point in the future.
Second.
Second. Moved and seconded. Um, any discussion? Yes.
Um, where it said select person, I was thinking maybe somebody would volunteer for that job, or, I mean, I'm happy to do myself, but um, I didn't know if somebody wanted to be involved.
Are we okay with just the town administrator?
Yeah, that's nice.
Okay, so...
Sorry, David.
It's okay.
Would you care to amend that to?
Yes, I'm happy to amend it to, uh...
Specifically the town?
I've moved the board empower the town administrator.
Okay, excellent. So, we have a, a motion, an amended motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much, and thank you. And we hope that it stays there. It works and there won't, won't be any wrinkles.
All right, well, since you guys voted for it, I am presenting you with the first beach toy.
Oh. I've, I've seen too much of, of a larger version of this.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Thanks, have a good night. Uh, moving along, we have a couple liquor license renewal applications. The first for the Inn at Ocean's Edge. We have a representative here, thank you so much for coming in. Do you have questions for the representative? If there aren't any, can I have a motion, please?
Move that the board approve and sign the liquor license application submitted by the West Bay Realty LLC doing business as the Inn at Ocean's Edge.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
And next up, we have the Cellar Door.
Do you want to come back and pick that up later or?
Uh, you can pick that up tomorrow, we can mail it to you, whichever you prefer. Okay.
We'll, we'll sign it once we're all done tonight, yeah. Uh, next up, we have a renewal from the Cellar Door Winery. The, the voice, the, the...
She's up there, she's there.
The voice is... So, we have a representative from the Cellar Door Winery. Do we have questions for the representative? If there are no questions for the representative, uh, can I have a motion, please?
I move that the board approve and sign the liquor license application submitted by Cellar Door Winery, Inc.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, David.
Moving along, um, we have a paving bid awards to consider. David, do you want to give a brief synopsis?
Sure, so if we went up to bid for our annual paving program, we received six bids back in a timely fashion and one late one, uh, which we didn't open. And the low bidder was FC Work and Sons, Inc., from Jackson. Um, we've never worked with them or had them do work for us. Color references all came back with glowing, almost like we called their office. And um, they've done work for the state, they've done work for communities, they do work for private individuals, have equipment, have manpower. We received their insurance certificate on Friday and a list of equipment. We're as comfortable as we can be with somebody now.
Okay.
And made the recommendation to move forward.
Questions?
Is this the old Fred Cameron Sons?
No.
No, okay.
I don't believe so.
I just had a, a question, Roundy Paving, is that, is that related to our, uh...
Yes.
That's his manager, okay. Is it his company or?
No, Sons.
Okay.
Would someone care to make a motion?
I move that the board award the 2023 paving bid to FC Works and Son, Inc., for the unit price is stated in their bid proposal.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Uh, any discussion?
So, um, I see.
Hmm?
So, uh, I see there's a note there about the launching ramp and the parking lot at Briesmer be closed for just a short period of time while that's being taken care of. Has there been any conversation about putting a few more good sized rocks up on the edge of where that pavement is going to be?
Um, repositioning, uh, what we have or additional will definitely be part of it.
I was thinking, I was thinking, as you turn in there, right directly to the left, there's a spot that two more right there would keep people from moving them and backing up on the lawn with trailers.
Yeah, we used to have a dumpster there and...
We did, yeah.
Uh, yes, definitely.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And moving along, we have um an increase in the pay as you throw signal use trash bags from our transfer station. Uh, would either of our representatives or town administrator care to elaborate on what's before us?
I'll elaborate. The Midco Solid Waste Corporation Board of Directors FY24 budget was based on the premise that the per ton charge was going to increase for disposal of commercial waste, and that translates down to a bag fee increase as well. It's been five, believe it or not, it'll be five years in July since the last bag increase, and um the inter-local agreement requires that uh the municipal offices of the four towns approve this, and if you don't, then I guess we can just ask taxpayers for more money at the town meeting to pay our share, but I wouldn't encourage that.
All right, any questions for David, or would someone care to make a motion?
I move that the board approve the Midco Solid Waste Corporation proposal to increase the pay as you throw fee schedule as of July 1st, 2023, thus establishing the price of the thirty-three gallon bag at three dollars per bag, the kitchen waste bag at two dollars per bag, and the per ton fee of two hundred and twenty-five dollars per ton.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And David, again, would you care to tell us about this invitation?
Sure, the Northport Town Administrator, um, Mr. Cassu?
Say that again?
James Cassu, I believe. The Northport Town Administrator reached out and said, um, would there be any interest on behalf of the Lincolnville Select Board to meet with the Northport Select Board, uh, with no particular agenda on their minds besides opening the dialogue and communication should something arise in the future, or some way to, um, something that might be mutually beneficial? And the suggestion was made that, uh, as at least one of their board members will be changing in June, or I don't know if that town meeting is in June or May, but after their town meeting and after ours.
Great.
Excellent.
I think it's awesome to talk to our neighboring towns.
Yeah, and while we're on that same subject, uh, not Northport, but close, um, the folks from Alsboro said they'd think about it.
They're having, they're having a serious changing of the...
They're having, uh, it sounds like they're going to have potentially three new board members in Alsboro, so...
Is that because there's a special, special...
Um, two of their people are, their terms are up, and as far as my understanding is having chose to re-up.
Yes.
And a third has submitted his resignation effective at this town meeting.
Oh, wow.
So, so it was nothing other than...
Nothing personal.
We're doing the gals, but no, I don't want to read it.
They gotta let the dust settle.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, cool, well, we'll look forward to setting a meeting date.
I was just curious, um, have, has this board ever met with the, the Northport Select Board?
Well, I don't, I'm not sure the full board has, but at one point, um, Lincolnville had a police department. The town of Northport approached us about possibly sharing that service.
Okay.
Um, and that was the last, I went to that meeting, I think, at least a...
Before my time.
Yeah, this was fifteen years ago. I'm making that up, but it was a long time ago.
Yeah. Yeah, all right. Okay, moving along, um, I'm going to tap you again, David, for this harbor management and access grant that we could potentially get.
Yeah, so, um, David, our public facilities director, uh, Dave Roundy, went to the harbor master training and came back and said, oh, I learned about this possible grant program, which is the Harbor Management and Access Grant. Um, he, he spoke with the, uh, oh, his name escapes me at, at the meeting, uh, that oversees this program, and talked about some things we were doing, including the hoist, and he thought that lined up almost perfectly with their program. And so they've just come out with the application. We've actually got it, uh, ninety-eight percent complete. One of the things requires a certification, um, that it's okay to apply and that we'll maintain that, um, for a minimum of fifteen years after. That's kind of a, not unusual in the grants, but we've got to think, you know, where, where's that facility going to be in fifteen years, or will that be where we want it? So, I think we could relocate the hoist to a different corner or something if we needed it, but, so...
Awesome, yeah.
Um, what if we don't use it for fifteen years? What would happen? They would want the money back?
Uh, potentially, they could, I, probably at least want their money back.
Okay.
I mean, I think they might kind of arm twist you pretty hard to put it back in the service, but, yeah.
I can't imagine something like that would be useful in some capacity.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mike, do you have a question?
Well, no, yeah, I was just going to follow up on that. Uh, do you know if we could, the town could transfer responsibilities?
Um, I think some of that probably will come to us in the grant paperwork, should it be offered, about in terms of, when you say transfer responsibilities, you mean...
Maintenance, maintenance for fifteen years?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure we could have somebody else, um, as long as it was available for public use, like guys is now with, with a certain amount of training.
Okay, yeah, yeah. No, I, I was just thinking, you know, this one winch could tie the town into assuming responsibility for the pier for the next fifteen years. It's maybe a great idea, but to have one winch doing, it's, it's kind of a...
Yes, yes, it's a, it's a important part, but it's a smaller part of the overall facility, but I'm thinking we're probably going to have that for fifteen years.
Yeah.
Or if we chose to, I don't know, sell it, probably could include the cost to reimburse whoever gave us this money to get us out from underneath it.
Yeah, thanks.
That's a hypothetical conversation.
Oh, yeah. It really is.
Woo, but, but, all questions are worthy questions.
And just so you know, this is a match, so, um...
Yeah.
We were proposing, since we'd already, we've already ordered the thing, by the way.
Yeah.
After you authorized it.
Yeah.
Months ago, um, we'd apply for the seventy-five percent them and twenty-five percent us.
Okay, great. Uh, there are no objections, I entertain a motion.
I move that the board authorize the town administrator to submit a harbor management and access grant for the replacement of the hoist at the pier, uh, with the funds for the local match to come from the harbor savings account.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And, uh, we need to countersign the warrant for the notice of election calling the five town community school district budget validation referendum. Does anyone have any questions for David specifically on this, or would someone care to make a motion?
I do have a question.
Excellent.
Yeah, yeah, David, um, does this tie into the recent news that the state found a bunch of money in a corner of a coffee can, and some of it's going back to some schools and some, some towns?
Um...
Was Lincolnville getting that?
Yes, uh, just for the benefit of anybody that may be watching at home or anyplace else in the world, uh, the Five Town CSD, which is Lincolnville's high school, they're going to have a district budget meeting on Tuesday, May 16th, at the new Camden Rockport Middle School on Milton Street at seven PM. And the warrant will, is posted around town now by the CSD. It'll be on our website when we put up our town meeting stuff here in the next week or ten days or so. Um, but yes, the CSD received a substantial amount more of money, let's see, well, yeah, of course they don't give me a total. Uh, Lincolnville, oh yeah, they did, the CSD's share with that coffee can money is, like I put it, was nine hundred ninety-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars, and Lincolnville's share of that was a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. We're still looking at a six point five percent increase, by the way, but...
Yeah.
Would have been ten point five otherwise.
Any other questions? Can someone make a motion, please?
Move that the board approve and countersign the warrant and notice of election calling five town community school district budget validation referendum to be conducted on June 13th, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And moving along, we have, uh, the revenue sharing adjustment. Uh, David, would you care to...
Yeah, continuing on with the conversation about coffee cans and money, uh, the auditor identified, do I want to write down for you, seventy...
Seventy-seven, three oh five.
Seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and five dollars in revenue sharing funds that can be utilized to reduce the property tax burden. So, as you saw in the sheet that was in the packet, I took the liberty to change the last page with municipal revenue sharing from what we had before at two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight, and increase that to three hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars. You don't have to do that this time, but...
Seems like a pretty darn good idea to me.
It does seem like a good idea, yeah.
Uh, would someone care to make a motion to that end?
I move that the select board's recommendation for the municipal revenue sharing line of the proposed FY24 municipal budget be amended to three hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars, and that the revised budget be presented to the budget committee for their consideration.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, further discussion?
I just wanted to understand this bully, so does that mean the net to be raised drops by that much?
By the seventy-seven, three oh five, or whatever, yes.
Yep. Yeah. Super great. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor? Super, thank you very much. And we have the draft annual town meeting warrant in your packet. Are there questions, concerns, edits, anyone wishes to make? Yeah.
Uh, we should add a T, so it says town of Lincolnville.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's all.
Oh, that's Lincolnville.
That was all I...
Sounds kind of awesome.
I'll look at that.
With that amendment, would someone care to make a motion?
I don't think...
There, no, we don't have to take any action on this stuff, right?
Right, just so you are aware, Article Four talks about making our land use ordinance consistent with the housing amendments that were passed by the last legislature and signed into law by the governor. That is currently being reviewed by council.
Yeah.
Um, I won't say it's all hocus pocus to me, but legalese and whatever else, you have the draft in your packet.
Yeah.
Um, there'll have to be a public hearing, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think held by the planning board before the vote can occur, but we're, we're a whole lot closer than we were before.
And, and we have time, statutory time to get that public hearing in, or the deadline...
We're going to be right up against it as we usually are.
It's pretty squeaky, but...
But we'll make it.
We'll make it.
Okay, okay.
With squeaks, yeah. Excellent.
Hopefully we won't need any changes.
Yeah. Shh, don't lie, do you have to say that?
Don't check it, yeah.
Was this the one that I heard something about, one of these regulations was going to get pushed out?
There's a potential, there's a bill in the legislature to, um, extend the deadline, not to amend, as I understand it, not to amend what's required, but to extend how long you have to actually implement it, but...
Two, two years.
But it's not, hasn't passed yet.
No.
No, I'll talk about it in my, I'll talk about it in my select person update.
Excellent.
Because there's a public hearing tomorrow.
Okay. Well, to that end, Kern, do you have an update for us?
Midco Solid Waste, yeah, we had a meeting.
Yeah.
The chair went there, I chaired the meeting, um, we had a report on the, make, uh, not makerspace, the reuse, I forget what they call it, because it's called different, the hatchery over to the high school. That meeting that, that, we actually changed the, the timing of our meeting, or the date of our meeting for Midco Solid Waste because of that meeting, because it was so important. And the, the hour manager, our site manager for Midco Solid Waste attended that along with a lot of the other representatives, and a lot of good information came out of that, and we're constantly trying to integrate things like that with Midco Solid Waste wherever we can. Um, the other thing that we, we talked about, that we're going to have a workshop about is, we need to get back to our committees, because our committees have not met in a long of a year. Um, we're going to have a workshop, we'll have our, our manager down there, we'll have the most important things that we need to get to, to move forward, and then, uh, we'll assign some things to our committees and get back to it. We've kind of taken some time off for a number of reasons, but we need to get back to it.
Sounds good.
Gus, do you have anything else there?
Uh, just to elaborate on the, the hatchery, so it was a really great public presentation about this hatchery program at our high school, um, where... where students will, will, will actually deconstruct buildings. In fact, hatchery students deconstructed the Lincolnville sewer. I forget the name of the.
Oh, the pump house, pumping station.
Pump house, yeah. And have reused that material and, and, and students gave a great presentation about deconstruction ordinances across the country and this, this, this concept where, I think they said upwards of 60% of the lumber in landfill doesn't have to be there. If you deconstructed houses, you could reuse so much of that material, saving, saving people money and, and not throwing away a perfectly good resource. After that, we got a tour of, of the hatchery and what they're doing with all this lumber and the really cool projects that, that our students are, are.
It's just really interesting. It is. A lot of this is being pushed by the school, well, well, kids from the school. It's very interesting. They're doing a good job.
That's exciting stuff. I like it. Mike, so you want to tell us about your legislative update?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's on that. Tomorrow, I just got an email the afternoon after the agenda deadline, so I couldn't put it on the agenda for discussion, decision and all that stuff amongst us. Also, but there's going to be a public hearing on the proposed two year extension to comply with 2003 housing development bill. So set in July this year, if it were to, you know, pass, go, go through all the stuff and pass, could be two years from now, 2025. And maybe that lasts tomorrow. And it's at 1:30 in room 216 in the Cross Building. And I'll be going up there, speaking, just not for the board, but as myself. And, but if anybody wants to, you know, email me thoughts or concerns or whatever between now and tomorrow, you know, 10 o'clock, something like that, feel free to do, because I'll try to get it in, yeah. About all there's to it. But well, I should mention that it's one of the handful of bills of the MMA sponsoring and pushing forward. This is one there, yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mike. Steve, an update? And I have no update to share. Moving along, we have the treasure and payroll warrants to approve and sign.
I moved that the board approve and sign the treasures and payroll warrants.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Thank you very much. And before we adjourn, I had a question for our town administrator under section M in the back. The school union 69 meeting that's happening tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. I've had a couple conversations with our other neighboring communities that are participating in that and there is general encouragement. If you can participate, it looks like it's a Zoom only meeting, but to just sort of, I don't know. If you haven't been following various conversations to, you know, bear witness to the conversation and I'm, I'm not really sure. I, I plan on attending via Zoom just to kind of see what they're talking about.
Concerns?
Yeah, there's several concerns. I don't know, David, could you give a really brief, probably better than I can. I feel like I'll, I'll flub it if I try to. Because I'm, I'm still trying to get up to speed.
Sure. Part of, excuse me, part of Union 69's challenges, bless you, is that there are three communities that do things three different ways, even though we all fall into the same umbrella of the law in terms of finances. And I think this, the union is trying to get a better grasp on their own internal processes. And they've had some change, turnover in staff a year or so ago, and they're looking to form a finance subcommittee so that everybody can get on the same page easier, better. There's been some concerns expressed by other communities about the way union or some of their own schools, not necessarily the union 69, some of their own schools demystifying the magic of school finance, I guess, is the best way to put it. The school has been, not throw them under the bus, very slow in turning stuff over to auditors for audits. We still don't have our FY '22 audit completed yet because we're, you know, holding load waiting for. And actually, we're waiting for the auditor now because at, over time, as you get closer to April 15th, the auditors, our accountants, they start switching from doing audits to doing business and people's taxes. So we're in the backseat. I mean, really, we should have, ideally, we get the school audit and ours by the end of the calendar year. So we're months behind now.
And, and so you say we are months behind, meaning our school is behind in submission again?
Yeah, we, we, we can't submit it with, obviously without having it and they didn't, they didn't get this stuff to the auditors in the timely fashion. And the auditors kept moving, you know, they're working, so of course they are.
And my, my understanding is that the other two schools that we are in the union with are experiencing.
Similar.
Similar circumstance. So I guess I bring this up to the board just to have you consider participating in the meeting. I mean, I, my immediate or initial question query that I would like to be enlightened on is this finance committee and how it's going to be structured and what actionable items are going to be, you know, deliverables, that kind of thing. So I guess my question, David, was, is I see that there's a Zoom thing. Is there a digital?
Yeah, I can forward, forward that agenda and you can just click right on that.
That would be awesome. Thank you. All right. Thanks for indulging that, that question. Any other business the board wishes to attend to before a final motion? Okay, I'll entertain a final motion, please.
I moved that we adjourn.
Moved and seconded.
Didn't have to bury it in.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Thank you very much.